Chris, Sheriff, the public, we thank you for this beautiful state that you provided for us. We just ask you to be with us today for this meeting, may God direct us, and may everything we do be pleasing even to your eyes. Jesus, amen and glory, amen.
Amen.
Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
All right, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight to our Mark VI meeting. We have two roll call. Curtis is here, Wendy's here, Miss Sue is here, Tyler is here, Jason is absent, Tom here. Our short-term Mr. Ederson is here. Mr. Harry is here, and Mr. Worm is on the Zoom machine over there. Dennis Thomas Sutcliffe will be here in a few minutes somewhere. He's on, I think I heard him calling.
He did, yeah, we had him talk.
So he'll be in in a few minutes. With that being said, if you had a chance to look over the agenda, there has been some adjustments. Sue, if you need to go over anything on that for me?
Nope, I submitted them all like at four o'clock today, so you guys have the amended agenda.
All right. I'll have a chance to look at that.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Aye, sir.
Proportional second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye, motion carries. And this is the next thing we do, is the minutes from the town council meeting for February the 21st, 2023.
Move approval of the minutes for the town council meeting on February 21st?
Sir. Proportional second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who say aye, motion carries. Information lineups. Our next city council meeting, or town council meeting, will be on Monday, March the 20th here at 6:00 PM. For those of y'all who were not here, we did have our hearing a while ago about our rates increase. There will be a job fair at the First Baptist Church on Thursday, March the 23rd at 10:00 AM. So how long does that thing last?
10 to 2.
10 to 2, okay. So anybody that knows anybody who needs a job, I'm sure there will be plenty of opportunities here. The candidate forum is going to be Thursday, March the 30th at 5:30 PM. And that is at the Anex Building.
Correct.
On a tour.
The Anex Plaza?
Yes. And then municipal election is on Tuesday, April the 4th, and that is to fulfill seats 2 and 4. Any discussion or any questions on any of that? All right, with that being said, Miss Sue, I'll turn the question up to you.
You skipped public participation, let's go back ways.
Oh, Lord, George.
I seen him do that.
I know, he did it on purpose.
Yeah. But I don't have nothing to say to this thing.
Well, I don't have a problem gambling myself, so I get that. So do we have somebody here to do a presentation on that?
Nope.
All right, well, I think it's up to you then.
Everything is okie dokie.
You just have to proclaim that, isn't it? March is the gambling. Problem gambling month.
Nothing on gambling.
Come on, Elijah.
Gambling, I know that. Yeah, I do that every day.
What is your month then? This is your month.
I do that every day.
All right, move it on then. Sue, you have the floor.
All right, so let's go ahead and talk about that next. So underneath public participation, I put Problem Gambling Awareness Month proclamation. So we've received this request from the Florida Council on Compulsive Gambling. The national, don't be laughing. The National Council on Problem Gambling has been recognizing March as National Problem Gambling Awareness Month for 20 years. And the Florida Council on Compulsive Gambling is the only organization that furnishes problem gambling services and support to thousands of Floridians each year. If past, if past the town will be included as a PGAM partner and supporter on www.problemgamblingawarenessmonth.org. So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation for the record. Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Whereas problem gambling is a serious public health issue affecting 1% to 3% of the general adult population, and often results in personal, financial, familial, legal, and other costs, including a high risk of suicide. And whereas it is estimated that over 200,000 Florida adults of diverse age, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status suffer from past-year gambling problems, and 700,000 more are at risk of developing such difficulties, constituting 4.7% of the adult population ages 18 and older. And whereas it is further important to note that these statistics do not account for youth who are increasingly and deceptively exposed to gambling concepts and are at an increased risk for developing gambling-related problems. And whereas it is also essential to recognize problem gambling as a societal issue, with 8 to 10 additional people adversely impacted by every problem gambler, increasing the affected population by an estimated additional 1.5 million individuals, with conservative projected social costs amounting to more than $9 billion nationally each year. And whereas problem gambling is treatable for those who seek help, which minimizes the harm to Floridians and to the state as a whole. And whereas any individual, professional, or other organization dedicated to assisting those in need can participate in raising awareness and preventing problem gambling by promoting the statewide confidential toll-free 24-hour problem gambling, problem gambling helpline, 888-ADMIT IT. And whereas the Florida Council on Compulsive Gambling's public awareness campaign provides an opportunity to educate the public, policymakers, educators, businesses, mental health, and criminal justice professionals, and others about the potential adverse effects of gambling, as well as social, legal, financial, and emotional impacts, and available supports. And whereas any individual, professional, or other organization dedicated to assisting those in need can participate in raising awareness and preventing problem gambling by promoting the statewide confidential toll-free 24-hour problem gambling helpline, 888-ADMIT IT. And whereas the Town of Bronson can demonstrate its support in addressing the problem gambling by raising public awareness through declaration and proclamation of the month of March 2023 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in the Town of Bronson. Now therefore, I, Robert Parton, Mayor of the Town of Bronson, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in the Town of Bronson. So that is up for your vote.
Okay. We need to entertain a motion for that after all that.
I motion that we mark March 2023 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month.
Go ahead, say it. Go ahead, say it.
Say it.
Good. After all that, you're even letting her talk. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those who say aye, motion carries.
That was wrong, and some of your part I could see, but I appreciate it. It actually is a near and dear, I know you guys are laughing, but it is actually a near and dear topic to my heart because my, believe it or not, my master's thesis was on the socio and economic effects of gambling on families. And so it is a problem, I know we laugh, but it actually is a problem for some. Not saying for you, but for some people. Okay, so first on my agenda is Resolution 23-02. Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Bronson and the County of Levy, Florida authorizing a resolution to re-adopt, ratify, and confirm previous resolutions enacting staged utility rate increases after public hearing thereon and establishing a new effective date for new rate established. So again, we just had the public hearing on this. So for the public, this is going to result in a 25% increase in wastewater rates effective May 1st of 2023, a 5% increase in water rates effective October 1st, 2023, an additional 25% increase in wastewater rates, May 1st, 2024. And we will be notifying everybody on the next water bill accordingly.
Was there some stamping on there?
We'll put the little labels like we always do.
Sue, let the record reflect whether those adjustments are based on professional recommendations or not?
Yes, so based on the recommendations from the Florida Rural Water Association, the rate study that was done in December 2022. Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
For the wastewater rates, is that if you're on sewer for the city? So if you're not on sewer, but you're on water for the city, you wouldn't be affected by the sewer one, but you would be affected by the water?
Correct.
And is that a recommendation so that we can improve our water system even further, or just so we can afford the water system that we have now?
Um, go ahead, Holly, you go.
Actually, a combination of both. We have been advised by this study that we were working under the, under the line, so to say, in other words, we were losing money and we didn't, we didn't have any reserves built into the package at all right now. So yes, to answer your question, it is to update to make our system work more efficiently and to better our system and also get some reserve.
Okay, so hopefully we won't have as many issues in the future as we've had in the past year or two, and as well as having reserves in case an issue does come up, we can afford it.
We are absolutely just right flat right now. So with that being said, any other questions, any other things? I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept Resolution 23-02?
Aye, sir.
Proportional second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries.
All right, next up is the donation request from country-run supporters regarding Bronson FFA and 4H. I'll go ahead and read it. Dear friends, great news, we have reunited the SRF and fund to support all Bronson, Gulf Hammock, and Otter Creek 4H and FFA exhibitors. This year's events will be held on March 4th through the 22nd, culminating with Sale Day on Wednesday, March 22nd. Many Bronson, middle high school, FFA, and local 4H students are getting ready to show their animals, having spent the last few months learning about dedication and responsibility through racing and showing an animal, now they need your help. While a portion of the show involves animals that return home with the students, the other portion is market animals that will be sold on Sale Day. The market price paid by the wholesale buyer is in line with today's commercial market sales. Unfortunately, it in no way covers the real cost of bringing an animal to the show. A financial burden on the student and their family would likely jeopardize future involvement and learning opportunities. Equally important, we know there are friends and supporters of Bronson, Gulf Hammock, and Otter Creek, FFA, and 4H students who would like to contribute but do not want to purchase an animal or attend the fair and bid. Because of this, we're asking you to consider donating to the fund as a Bronson, FFA, and 4H supporter. Any amount, great or small, is welcome, and will be used to ensure that every student achieves a minimum sale amount while using the full amount of all contributions. So in the past, last year, obviously, we separated, we did 250 to each, but now we can just do the one. We can do the 500 to just country-run supporters. Motion?
Need a motion?
Make a motion, we donate $500 to country-run supporters for this wonderful fair.
Aye, sir.
Proportional second, all those, any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, say aye, motion carries.
The next two kind of follow that?
Yeah, so the next two letters I just included in your packet, it's a letter from Cassie Strickland. Cassie is a senior at Bronson Middle High School, this is her sixth and final year as an FFA member, and her fourth member showing a fat steer. Next year, she'll be studying at the Abraham Baldwin Agricultural College in Georgia, so she just invited you to go to the fair. And then the next letter is from Shelby Strickland. Shelby's a senior at Bronson Middle High School, this is her seventh year as an FFA member, and she's currently serving as the chapter president. Again, just inviting you to the fair. All right, next up is a letter from JP Laurie, which I'm going to go ahead and read into the record. I am the owner of the Floridian RV park on Highway 27 and am working to lessen the noise in our park from semi trucks' engine braking when entering the town, which tends to be in front of our park and very noisy. I understand from FDOT that engine braking prohibited signs can be installed, but will first require the town to establish a noise pollution ordinance and demonstrate that the noise ordinance is enforceable. The man who is looking into this matter at FDOT is Patrick Upshaw. We have a very nice, quiet park, and if this noise problem can be lessened, it would be much more enjoyable for guests staying here. Thank you for your assistance and help. And JP is here to answer any questions regarding his request.
Okay, do we have, do we already have?
Have noise ordinance already?
We have a noise ordinance.
But I'm pretty sure we do because we have a sign prohibiting engine braking coming from more than.
This was a conversation last year that we.
Yeah, so if we already have that sign, you have to have that noise ordinance, then we should have a noise pollution ordinance. Because if not, we should not be able to have that sign.
And DOT would have to put it up because it's on.
I mean, I included the noise ordinance in here, it's Chapter 14 in your packet, it's about four pages long. I mean, as I read it, we didn't have it in here, but maybe I'm overlooking something. I mean, it addresses horns, radios, yelling, animals, vehicle defects, loading and unloading of boxes, pile drivers and hammers, blowers, screeching of tires.
General loud noise from the engine, I mean, you couldn't really do it to specify.
I think they want something specific, though.
But if we have that sign, then I.
But what happens if we put it up before DOT required the ordinance? You know what I'm saying?
Well, DOT, well, I don't know.
This is what, this came directly from FDOT.
Like I said, we have a sign, and Williston has it, when you come into town, they have a.
Right.
And we have one coming in the Bronx. When you see here that engine braking prohibited, I wish they would put it.
So we, but we have one here in Bronson, you're saying? In Talons?
It starts at the town limit, it's right by the bank here, right? Yeah, on the right-hand side.
If you're coming in.
I mean.
Right by the end, please.
Is it enforced, though, is it going to make a difference to put another one up if they're not enforcing the one that's already there?
Listen, Matt, you have to catch them to stop.
You have to catch them and some, you have some, I'm happy to take, break the slowdown.
Just a second. Mr. Worm? Yes, sir. If we already have a noise ordinance in place, but it does not specifically address what the terminology in the world today is called jake braking, I think is what they call it. Do we need to put that in there specifically to get DOT to process this? Or do we need to update, other words, do we need to update our noise?
I do not understand what it is that you're talking about. What is this noise?
I also need clarification on this.
Jake braking, it's the engine braking from the semis to help them slow down.
They're using the engine instead of their brakes.
It makes, it makes, it makes a loud noise. Sir?
Is it like a screeching noise?
No, the engine, the engine revs up, it's called exhaust braking.
All right, Mr. Worm, what did you say now?
You cannot possibly list everything in the world that might make an offensive noise, no matter how categorical you get, at some point you're going to have to say, and any other noise that is unusually disturbing or upsetting or disruptive or whatever. So I don't have it in front of me, but there's got to be laws with any ordinance that would basically cover this. Okay. The question becomes, if you're talking about noise that's created on the state's highway, you may be treading on the business of the Florida Highway Patrol or the Highway Department or, I don't know. But the basic answer is, I'll check it to be sure, but I think there's probably as much language as you can reasonably put in the ordinance to say that the noises must be loud and disturbing and disrupting of the public enjoyment. It's probably a violation. That's not easy.
All right, so will this, we can pull the ordinance out and check it out, and then we can get back with you for the.
Yeah, I will, we'll figure something out.
Okay. All right, sir, and then we'll have something that we can, like I said, I do not know exactly what the retired requirements for DOT is to do.
Well, it says local entity has responsibility for demonstrating that their local noise ordinance is enforceable. So is it enforceable?
Okay, we got one, but we don't.
If Highway Patrol pulls them over, but 90% of the time they're not going to.
Yeah. So they. All right, sir, well, we just need to look into it and see what else we need to do or adjust on it, okay?
I will, I will, I get the bro.
All right, thank you, sir. Doctor?
Yes, sir. I understand that, you know, it probably won't be enforced, it's just something that DOT needs in order to put the sign, and hopefully most of the truck drivers will respect it. That's all we can hope for.
That's all you can do.
Okay. Thank you very much for bringing this up and addressing it. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, JP.
Jake brakes sound good.
They give them the respect and speed limit.
If they're going to speed limit, they don't ever have to use them.
All right, next up, I'm bringing this to your attention because this is not the first time that this has come up, so I just want to get a feel for how the council thinks about this kind of thing. This company reached out to me last week regarding basically the, I guess we call it the lease on the Verizon Tower that we get $1,100 a month on right now. So basically what Steep Steel is, is they're a, I guess they represent various cities and counties in negotiating with cell tower owners and cell service providers. So what she's. They do both. Specifically, they were talking about the Verizon Tower because we get income from that. So in essence, what they're, what they're pitching, and what I get pitched frequently, this is not the first time, is in the event that you guys want an influx of cash right now, so the example she's giving me is she has companies that would bid on this anywhere from 250 to say $700,000, $750,000. So if we would give up our landlord position for the Verizon Tower, give this to a different company, we forego that $1,100 per month, but then they take it over as the landlord and they give us, let's just say $500,000 as a one-time capital, you know, influx of the town. And then they would be the landlord for a 40-year term, basically. So they pitched this to municipalities and say, are, do you need money? We're not saying you need money, but do you need money if you need $500,000? This might be a good way to get that money, but you guys would be giving up that $1,100 per month over this 40-year timeframe.
Well, they're trying to get the money that we would get every month.
And then they're going to lease it out to other companies.
And they're going to get more.
Correct. Right. Right. So I mean, like I said, I get pitched this all the time, I was like, you know what, I'm just going to put it out there just to see what you guys think. I mean, I'm not advocating either way, but.
They're going to give $500,000, they're going to make money.
They would definitely make money. This company would make money, they make 6% of the sales, so they're going to get $30,000 of that. We get $1,100 a month currently.
Yeah, but they're going to.
They're going to lease out.
And they're going to put other people.
Tell them to buy us two lift stations. Then we can make a deal.
Right, we need two.
How long?
I don't, I don't know. How long is that lease agreement with Verizon?
I think that's from now.
Like it's indefinite?
I think it was.
Indefinite with no increases?
Yeah, they went right out of time when we came in.
But it's not, it's not, I mean, I thought you were talking about how it was going, it's going to be, you know.
Right, it doesn't have an end date.
But it's going to be for.
I would just think that whenever we can, we should propose increases.
I agree. We had one right before, yeah, right when we started. I think it was $1,000 a month.
So I wonder if it's a five-year period. But two, we got to remember because if we do something like that, we have, what's the other company that's on our tower?
There's nobody else on the Verizon, right?
Oh, she's talking about.
It's up at the water tower, this is Verizon.
Where is the Verizon tower?
In the park.
In the park.
Oh.
Different. I mean, they do water towers too, but we were specifically talking about Verizon.
I know, this is the same tower.
No, 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 different.
My only point was just to.
Make sure.
There should be on a calendar.
Increases whenever we can, correct.
When it expires, any, any contract we have should be on a calendar when it expires, and then a couple of months before that, we should start thinking about what we want to do before we need to propose increases.
We get my station, we get, we get $1,100, we start off with $1,000 a month, now we get $1,100 a month. And sometimes you can get greedy and go get nothing. I mean, you can $1,100 free money, I mean, good dollar, what more can you ask for?
Well, that, that, well, you can ask for more, sir.
Well, I know, that's what's probably.
Because it's Verizon.
That's what's wrong with, that's what's wrong with things now, you, like I said, you get greedy, then you try to move up the tower, and go somewhere else, then you ain't getting nothing, so. I just, my opinion, you know.
No, I understand, and I respect your opinion, I just think that Verizon's being greedy on the other side.
Well, that don't make it do, but we made an agreement with them to do this, and you know, whatever.
There's got to be some kind of contract somewhere.
Yeah, there is, I just don't, I don't know what's off my head.
I'd love to point it out for you guys, guys, just the calculations, just to see what kind of proposal that is. We lose $28,000 if we did that over a 40-year period. So it wouldn't be worth it, they're offering us less than we would make over a 40-year period.
And like I say, there ain't nobody going to.
I don't see the need for the middleman, if somebody else wanted to do it, we'd just do it.
Is that $1,100?
You just get the middleman.
Is that $1,100 from up there? Is that going to the park fund I used to?
Yes.
Or is it for repairs and that kind of thing?
Whatever. Okay, moving right on along.
So we're not interested, correct?
No.
Okay, just making sure.
They already gave us two lift stations.
We're more interested in gambling.
The good news is that now I can just make these all go away when they come before me. More so than any, all right. Next is a collection services agreement with Fox Collection Center. So as you know, we recently passed the resolution about the new deposit rates and all that sort of thing. I'm proposing that we sign this contract with Fox Collection Center for, again, this is strictly for tenants. If it's an owner and it's delinquent and we still don't have enough with the deposit or whatever, you know, we'll do the liens like we're still doing, but this is for tenants, people who skip town, they don't own it, they owe us a bill for whatever reason, something is better than nothing, because right now still, these people would just.
How much do they take?
They take, if you look at the second page of the contract, for bad debt, they take 70%, we get 30%. Pre-legal, they take 65, we get 35, and in legal accounts, they take 60, we get 40. I know it's not a lot of money, but it's better than nothing, because right now we get absolutely nothing. When someone skips town and they're a tenant, we have no recourse.
30% of 100 bucks is better than 0%.
That's correct. It doesn't cost us anything other than, you know, signing a contract and then, they do all the work, they do the legwork, they're going to go after them, they're going to. And more importantly, what we can say to them, if it's a tenant, we can say, listen, we do send you to collections, this will go on your credit history. I mean, we can't do anything now.
They're going to annoy you and call you every day.
They're going to call you, right, they're going to try and get that 70 bucks or whatever, right, exactly. So I recommend we do this just so we can, we have a recourse in the event it's a tenant that skips town.
There's no upfront cost?
None.
Doesn't sound like a bad idea.
No, the county actually is doing this now, Williston's doing this now, that's where we got the idea to do it.
We will resolve that problem with this new.
We should, but you got to remember still, yes, that starts, you know, going forward, but what about all the people that we have right now that we don't have enough deposit? There's got to be people out there, you know, we're still going to, until we can get this all straightened out, so.
Except for water and sewer licenses? Yes, yes. All right, what's the pledge of the council?
Our motion that we accept the contract from Fox Collection Center.
Aye, sir.
Well, all right, we have a motion, and we have a second, and what is the pledge of the council? If all those are favorable, please, bye-bye. All right, those who say aye, motion carries.
All right, so Ms. Bee asked for notification in the last council meeting about this new deposit fee schedule. So we had a whole conversation, the staff did, about, you know, notifying people once they're past their, you know, $50 disconnect reconnect fee, and if we're like, well, if we have to notify them at that point, they're going to come back and say to us, well, why didn't you just call us and tell us, you know, when the bill was due? I really don't want to get into that. So we came up with this letter that we're going to send out, assuming you guys are okay with it. It just basically says, Dear resident, on Tuesday, February 21st, the Bronson Town Council passed Resolution 23-001. It sets forth revised standards, fees, and procedures for services provided by the town. Copy of the resolution is enclosed through your records. Per Resolution 2105 that took effect on Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, utility bills will continue to be due on or before the 15th of the month. utility bills will continue to be due on or before the 15th of the month. If the 15th falls on a weekend or a holiday, the next business day applies. If utility bills are not paid by the due date, a ten percent late fee applies. If utility bills remain unpaid as of 4:30 on the 21st of the month, accounts are subject to a fifty-dollar disconnect reconnect fee. Again, if the 21st falls on a weekend or holiday, next business day applies. Per Resolution 2301, if the utility bill is not paid within thirty days of the due date, the service is disconnected, the account is closed, and the deposit is applied toward the outstanding balance. Restoration of service will require a new deposit according to the following schedule: water hundred, sewer hundred, trash hundred. The new deposit fees apply to both owners and tenants. If for some reason an outstanding balance remains for several months, owners may have liens imposed on their properties and tenants may be sent to collections. Over the last several months, our staff has received numerous concerns from residents not receiving utility bills in the mail. Please be assured that utility bills are always mailed within the first few days of the month. However, we do not have any control over the postal service. Until the town has a new utility billing system in place, I highly recommend that you add a reminder to the calendar in your cell phone about the fact that utility bills are due on the 15th. We get that excuse more than anything. I didn't get my bill, we get that all the time, so... So our goal is to send this out to all the residents, residential, you know, accounts to let them know this is the new, you know, this is a new deal and then they shouldn't have any issues hopefully going forward.
Sounds good.
Are you going to send this to owners as well, owners of the rentals?
I hadn't thought about doing that.
If somebody moves out, they're going to have to put the utilities in their name. And they're going to have to have a deposit.
Yeah, we can do both. I mean, not commercial, but yeah, residential owners and tenants, we can do both. And the more the merrier. Again, we just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
This doesn't change anything for people who already are set up and have been set up and pay your bills?
Unless you don't pay your bill, that's when it would affect you. Right, if you don't pay your bill and we close your account, then you're going to have to pay a higher deposit to get it restarted.
It's, okay, so is there a way, or do we have, with a new system, include a way to, like, you could auto-pay?
Not yet, not currently, but when we switch everything over, yeah, oh yeah, oh, for sure. We get that request all the time, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'm one of those people who don't always get their bill until I've reached you, so...
The postal service is...
But I have a reminder, so, but that's what I'm saying, is if I could auto-pay, then it would just do automatically.
Do we have auto-pay?
No.
We just recently got, last year, so it got online.
Online, right.
I remember asking for that.
Yes.
One step at a time.
One step, right, one step at a time, we're getting there.
Okay, is there further discussion on this?
Nope.
Okay, so that's going to go out this week. Okay. Next is, I just wanted to update you from the last council meeting about the request from John McDonald regarding Climate Vision, that was that municipal gap filling partnership. So Michael Johns at Y Fiber, you guys asked me to follow up with Michael Johns and Stephen Calhoun from Suez. Michael Johns said that it would affect their equipment, so basically I said, we're done. And then Stephen Calhoun from Suez, the company's now Veolia, said that the report that they would have given to us would not take the place of the report that they do. There's Florida State statute, it's what needs to go in that report, so...
It messes with Y Fiber, then.
I'm basically going to tell them, no thanks, thanks but no thanks, it's going to mess with our Y Fiber, so we're not moving forward with that. All right, next is update on, you guys asked me regarding the impact fees for water and wastewater, the capacity fee study we did through Florida Water. You asked me to get opinions from Todd Hubbard at Twofold Water Engineering and Jason Shepler from Midtower. Todd basically said that he feels replacement cost is the way to go so that the funding's available when it's needed for repairs and plant expansions and that sort of thing. He was pretty unequivocal about that. Jason Shepler would not put anything in writing, but I did have a conversation with him on Friday afternoon. He's a little more on the fence. So what he said was, yes, from the perspective of the wastewater treatment plant itself, that he would definitely recommend the replacement value, but he said from a market perspective, meaning, you know, development and having new development come into town, he said he would probably go with the remaining useful life. So he was a little more wishy-washy, he didn't really want to give us a definitive answer. So that's where that stands. So next, last on my agenda at least, is the first reading of Ordinance 2301. I want to tell you a little bit about, this is what I added to your packet today. So in here is an ordinance that Attorney Warren drafted for the impact fees, assuming you guys do want to go forward. After it is basically the study from Florida Water, we'd have to have attached to the ordinance. And then last is the ordinance that we took this from, which was the one passed by the city of Williston in January. And I want to bring a couple of things to your attention because there are some differences between the one that Attorney Warren put together and Williston's. If you look at Williston's in particular, they make a lot of concessions for commercial businesses. So when I asked Attorney Warren to put this together, I said, at least, off the bat, just go ahead and put residential, we'll kind of lump everything in together. But if you look at Article 2 in Williston's, and you'll see it because it says Article 2, sewer capacity, sewer system capacity fees, and it's got an ERU factor, you'll see it says, you know, single-family detached, detached dwelling, one is the factor. So if the amount is six thousand dollars, you pay six thousand dollars. A duplex, a one or two-bedroom duplex would pay point eight-three-three of the six thousand dollars, they wouldn't pay the whole thing. And then as you go down, the commercial, they broke commercial by literally thirty different types of things, like auto service, banquets, cocktail lounges, barbers, beauty salons, bowling alleys, churches, convenience stores. And they put an ERU factor to each of those things. I didn't know if we wanted to get that specific. I mean, we certainly can. We don't have as much commercial, you know, coming into Bronson as Williston does, but we could, I guess, in the future. So I just kind of wanted to point that out to you because we didn't put this on ours, but we certainly can and put it with this ERU factor. And then obviously in ours, Attorney Warren left the portion blank as to whether or not we want to go with the replacement value for water and sewer for the remaining useful life for water and sewer. So right now it's just a blank amount. Thoughts?
All right, any discussion? I still have the numbers high, but there ain't much we can do about it.
So, I mean, we need to put something in here because obviously if we're going to advertise this, which we need to, we need to put an amount in here.
And we have to use, we have to use one of those two?
We have to use one of those two.
So you know, the legal aspects of the fight.
Correct.
Still talking about the capacity fees?
Correct.
Williston's, I mean, because I cover Williston, I think theirs was about sixty-five hundred dollars for three-bedroom residents.
Right. So the remaining value...
Right, nine thousand something dollars, but...
Uh, wastewater is ninety-seven eighty and water is twenty-seven fifty. So I think it was a twelve-five. Twelve-five-thirty is the replacement value for both. And then the remaining useful life is closer to Williston, sixty-nine forty.
Are they replacing something?
These are, it's for new builds. Basically, if a builder came in and built a new house, they would have to pay either this six thousand and change or twelve thousand and change per house to the city. And we would be putting it in an escrow account for like expansion of the water or wastewater treatment plants.
So the smaller ones, six thousand and something for both? It's a little bit better.
Is there a potential for a plan for existing residents that are in our town Bronson that aren't on our sewer system but are on our water system? So I know there's quite a few of us.
Yeah, this would not affect them, this is strictly for new builds.
Is this something for allowing it though for new buildings that are coming in? Is that something for a plan for the future? Because I think that's something that people would think about. If they get a notice, if you're giving a notice out to people that are requesting, understand that they're going to get used. Does that make sense?
It would be on a new, like, we haven't passed our new building fee schedule, like, we would be putting it on there. So when somebody came in to build something, we give them this fee schedule to say, right, this is what it would cost for the plans, right.
So basically what this is, what this impact fee is, just say for instance, somebody came into town and they want to build a new house, a spec house. The choices on the table are six thousand dollars, how much was it?
Sixty-nine thirty.
Seven thousand dollars impact fees from the town. Or twelve thousand five hundred. And we have to use one of those two to meet the legal...
It's one of the numbers we can use. There's only two.
Those two, those are the only two we can, because of the legal aspects of the thing. You do not go by, use their studies. Just can't pick something out of the sky.
Well, you can't do, so if they went for septic, for, they still did the water, but they went for septic, does that...
This is for like...
It has nothing to do with septic.
This is...
It's just new build, doesn't matter if they're on septic sewer.
So they have to pay enough, right?
Correct.
So it's just an tax fee for being on.
Where these numbers have gotten kind of inflated is due to the fact that we don't have enough people in a condensed area where we can have a sewer system and we can't reach out to people just like myself. Who I'll never get sewer.
For every one of our, every one of our houses on sewers, Williston got what, like three, I think, I know what it was?
High Springs has three.
Yeah, for every one of our houses.
So the numbers have been escalated due to that. And just like when, um, Don was over here for Williston, he brought that, he brought that out. But the fact that we do need to put something in place because infrastructure to build something, just like the subdivision that we're talking about out here, the fifty houses, we got to have something, we can't just, I can't put that burden on the good people of Bronson right now who's already here. So...
So what's the difference between, well, what's the understanding in that document, the difference between replacement value and useful life?
Imagine how you use the money?
Well, no, so let's say that, well, I mean, let's use our wastewater treatment plant. So our wastewater treatment plant is how old, Curtis? Roughly? Twelve years old, right? So let's say, and I don't know what the useful life is, but let's say in theory that a wastewater treatment plant is good for thirty years, okay? If you use the remaining useful life numbers, you're using them based on the additional eighteen years that you have left of that plant. So if you were to buy something and replace, it's equivalent of like, in a homeowner's policy, I'm a, you know, I'm an insurance person, so I'm going to do the example there. So when you insure your stuff on your homeowner's policy, you can do replacement cost or you can do actual cash value, okay? You have a TV in your house, it's five years old. Your house burns down and if you have actual cash value, that TV is worth nothing. Because TVs are, you know, they depreciate all the time. But if you have replacement cost, you get, you know, I don't know, we'll say a thousand dollars to replace your TV. It's exactly the same thing.
The replacement cost goes into a fund to replace the water treatment plant for the years.
Correct.
And then useful life is essentially, you're getting eighteen years, but they're only using it for eighteen years.
Right, you're only getting the, you're getting the depreciated...
So the replacement value is you're asking the new construction to pay for time to have it used.
Correct. Correct. I mean, that's why Todd's saying it really makes sense because you need to be thinking about expansions. If you're expanding, you have to pay for everything brand new.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, you're not going to, you can't use the depreciated value. And that's why they're pushing it.
But that number is twelve thousand.
And that's why it's twelve thousand.
Yeah, but if you're building a house, twelve thousand dollars ain't anything.
Right.
It's really not.
I get it.
I, I, this is just my personal feelings here, okay? There's a lot of things that we're working on right now that would change this drastically if that came, if that tuition came into place. But there's also a reality here in the fact that, yes, we do need to do something. We can't just sit back here and scratch our head and stick our heads in the sand. So, um, if you go with the higher number, I think you are going to impact potentially some potential growth coming to Bronson, potentially. Not much. It wouldn't be in the commercial end, I think, Mark, you'll agree with that.
Yeah.
It would be more as to the single-family home person that's trying to come here and decide they want to build a house in Bronson and they're looking for a place to go and they think this is nice, it's twenty-five miles to Gainesville, blah, 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 that and all that kind of good stuff, got a hospital and everything else. But we got a twelve thousand dollar impact fee and Newberry has a six thousand or Williston has a six thousand.
Those municipalities though are larger.
Exactly.
Are larger. And I will tell you that the town of Bronson real estate is going up. It's from, over last year, it's gone up significantly. I can't, it is limited to date, but I'm old, so I can't remember what it said. But it, I was surprised, you know, it was a good number, so...
I mean, the one, here's the one caveat that, you know, might help you guys. One of the things that Attorney Warren put in here is that we would review these numbers every three years. We would do a brand-new study, assume it, let's just assume that all the, you know, ducks line up and we get this fourteen million dollar grant so we can put everybody on wastewater. At that point, obviously, those numbers would go down because we'd have way more people. So, you know, we can't always revisit it, no matter what we pass today, if we pass something, you know, now, we can always revisit it. So if you're thinking about just going with the remaining useful life, we can still revisit it.
Might I say one more thing before you guys decide?
Okay, just one second.
Sure.
You got to wait in line.
I waited in line. My eyes are working back here, I'm sorry.
Mark might be able to help with this too. So we're thinking about it as an increase for new builds, which may potentially affect the growth of our town or at least how fast we grow. Is that going to affect the values, not only of those houses, but of the current houses around Bronson? Because they're going to have to accommodate for that when they're selling the house or when they're buying it. And therefore, are their houses, others' houses going to be valued? Are they increasing the value of the houses around there and potentially encouraging people to sell or deterring people from coming into our town? Because our town doesn't offer, it offers stuff, but it doesn't offer a lot. Our church is just as rural, use my words, but rural as we are. Williston's kind of in between, it definitely has a little more city and Jibland has a little more city, but you don't have to go far. Is that going to affect us in the long, are we going to actually get money?
That's the question, at least.
I will say that developers are going to build that into the cost of what they sell the houses for. So anything, anything that increases the value of property is going to increase everybody's value. That's the simplest way I can explain it.
The developers just build this into the price. Absolutely. It's just a hard business. Williston only recently adopted this capacity fee thing, but they saw the problem coming. How do you replace your sewage treatment plant? Well, they, they got, they had some other problems that, I mean, I'm pretty...
Sixty-five.
They told me that they were actually... And it wasn't just two, three dollars, it was two, three hundred dollars. But that's another story, so that's, we don't want to go there.
So does the difference between the two, does it affect how you can spend the money back on the water and sewer?
No.
You just get less of it.
I mean, I'll use this for example, Gainesville, what, a month ago, had a huge wastewater accident. Do you remember that, Curtis? Over by Canapa Hop Park and over twelve thousand gallons. So can you imagine how much it would cost to spend that, to fix that?
Yeah, it's huge.
So, I mean, yeah, it tortures people, but you have to look at what's in the best interest of the city, future-wise.
Our biggest problem there, the only thing that we have bringing in revenue is sewer and water. So when you don't have anything else to bring in any revenue and the rates go up, especially with the sewer, you know, we got grants to put sewer into communities where the people really can't afford it. And I think that's been the biggest issue. Yeah, we got, we got a grant, we don't have to pay anything, but it's taxing the people that can't afford it. And now it's moving to the place where, you know, we don't have sewer in places that some people may want it. But because we only have those two revenues to bring in... But because we only have those two revenues of bringing in income, you can only get so much and the rates are going up higher and higher. Trying to compensate for what we don't have. If we either got to come to the point where we just say, listen, we got to stop right here and build and fix what we got. If not, you're gonna have people deterred from coming here, because if the impact means they can't do it, they can make money. But at the same time, as a city, if these developers want to build here, then I think they should pay for it and not the people that's living here.
I agree.
You know, if they want, I mean, what it's gonna cost, will it hurt, cause we're not growing? You know, I'd rather not grow than to be growing, doing something that we can't afford, yeah?
I, I would say that Florida is not hurt for people coming to Florida. I just, I just read something, all the, all the great places that everybody wanted to live are declining. Like by the end of twenty twenty-three, it's gonna be declining by up to twenty-five percent. New York, San Francisco, Seattle, and somebody else, somewhere else I don't care about.
There's a reason why Duke Energy is putting in this big power line outside of town here, it's not because they, they just want to spend some money.
It's like the road, they say the toll road's not coming through and everybody's against it. Push comes to shove, the likelihood of that toll road is gonna come through this area.
Eventually.
Eventually. And so you look at the growth, that alone is gonna bring the twelve thousand dollars.
I will close on, I'll just say one more thing, we're always struggling for money, we have these big rate hikes coming up, because we don't collect enough money. I agree with Curtis, I think we should go with the twelve thousand dollars. People are gonna build, I, I, I have a crystal ball, but I will tell you, studies are showing that builders are still building, especially in Florida.
So people are already building, I mean, if you, if you leave from here and go out like behind the racetrack, like I know that's not the city limit, but it's, it's still Bronson today. But, and just around, like over by the school board and just on the way back, there's houses springing up everywhere that somebody could put.
All the way down Archer, all the way down Archer Road.
A lot of people, a lot of people are building, but they're not building the city limit. They're building outside the city limit, because they don't have that.
If you look at the new places going in, Paul Meadow Place, it's not Paul Meadow Place, that right there, how much money would the city revenue make off of?
Three hundred, three hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Three hundred sixty thousand dollars.
After, after.
Off of one house.
After small, after small number.
Here, is that twelve thousand dollar number, is that for a three bedroom, two bath house, is that true?
It's anywhere.
It's just any time.
Anytime.
So you're, I'm basically doubling what Williston's got for the message. Due to the numbers that are, we have to go by. We have no choice. So flat twelve thousand or is?
It's twelve, five thirty.
And six.
This is what they said, this is why you have to do it, because this study is a guidance that you have to go by. And we have two choices.
Forty and twelve. How many useful lives?
Twelve, five thirty.
Useful life.
What's the useful life then?
That was sixty-five.
Sixty-nine, forty.
Well, what's who says one of those for us? You do twelve thousand, whatever it was.
Three years.
Can we adjust?
I think that'd be damage dollars, I don't know, twelve thousand dollars, I mean.
When you have, when you have built a house.
Yeah, uh, do twelve, okay, then a couple of years, or three years, whatever, revisit it and, 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 you know, if you need to do it, increase, increase, we don't, be like it is.
Because you, if you have people coming in regardless and the growth rate, the amount of houses still coming in is similar to what we're doing now without it, then you know right there, it's not a big deal. We've been surveyeded and decreased it if that price, if that's still the pricing too. So if it's.
I wouldn't go with the higher, I would, I would go with the lower even number and then increase, cause once you go to twelve, twelve, you can't go no higher. So you can go to sixty, then you can go up.
That's what I was kind of thinking.
And the rea, and I, and that's exactly where I'm headed to, right there. The reason why I say that is, in agreeing with Aaron here on that, is we're starting somewhere. We set a precedent with this. Then if we need to adjust it, you know, down the road somewhere, yes, we can do that, given this opportunity.
Okay, you can start with the story.
Look at, look at, I'm sorry.
Here's what I really hate, Mark, just a second, here's what I really hate. Aaron, I've been here a long time, okay?
Long time.
I have never, and the ones of us that have been here, long time. We've never seen the houses being built in this town like it is right now, okay? And for somebody to come in here and say, we're gonna put a fifty-house subdivision, that's just unheard of.
And it's good though.
It, it's good, and, and I want to see Bronson grow and prosper and do better. But I would also hate to know that I went in here and I was responsible for having somebody like them. If we come up here and say, okay, we're gonna put a twelve down, a five hundred dollar bill right on top of you to start off with. That might put a sour taste in their mouth, I'd hate to see them reveal the cost, you know, just to say, hey, we can go spend our money somewhere else.
I want to say one more thing, I'm gonna, see, we won't grow, but then you can also, you can stunt it.
Yes, you can, I think that's.
Now, couldn't we talk to the builders, though, that you said I've already done, and propose what?
Well, the reason why we can't do that, because this right here is the only thing we can go by, it's either one or the other.
But you can't propose the idea of what they're used to in other towns and what.
Lord, no, you don't want to do.
Not in the markets, I definitely hope not.
Other towns are a lot cheaper than us.
A lot.
The only thing I would say is, we have a history of not charging enough. I've only been here for three years, I know you guys have been here for a hundred years, I get it. We have, we have a history of not charging enough. We've had, we've had double-digit increases in water, double-digit increases in sewer, and that is taxing the people that are here. So why are we gonna make the same decision again to go lower? You're not gonna stunt any growth. We don't want fast growth anyway. You're not gonna stunt any growth, it's four thousand dollars difference. It's only four thousand dollars difference.
Six thousand.
No, 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 it's seven thousand to twelve thousand, right?
No, it was twelve thousand, it was six thousand.
Sixty-nine, forty to twenty, twelve, five thirty, so.
Okay, so fifty-five hundred dollars. That is literally nothing to a builder. I'm telling you right now, it is nothing, fifty-five hundred dollars.
But what, what else someone's gonna be?
Papa, if they're building a house, they're not gonna care.
Now, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, some, some, what else someone's gonna be?
If I'm gonna build a house, I'm not gonna care about twelve thousand dollars. Cause like, to, cause the amount it's gonna cost me to build a house is gonna be about three hundred thousand dollars.
You do reach a point when you're up in those higher levels where.
Five, six.
You just expect it. Like you have to pay GRU, Duke, whoever, so much money to hook stuff up, permits and all that stuff. It's just the cost of building a house, it's expected.
I do think that two points were brought up though, that are really important for side notes later. One that, you know, we talked about, we put a lot of pressure on our current citizens over in town to put money into it. And we talked before about annexing and maybe seeing where we're at with that. I know it's a long-term process, like expanding our borders so that we have more people and more room to build. But also Curtis brought up the point that we're putting things like the sewage systems in places in which they can't afford it. But there are places that can afford it that don't have them. So maybe we should look at where, like do a survey of some form, where we're putting things and where we could put them, where other people could put the money into it.
See, the grant money, I don't know what you just said, when we got grant money to do the first project, it wasn't our choice what we put it in. It was determined by whoever gave us the money to where, where, where to go.
And that's how it is now.
And that, and we have nothing to do with it.
And that's not gonna change.
So they're only granting it for those.
That's not gonna change.
Yeah, that's, that's where, that's where that works, we don't, we don't wait to jump. Second, two times, two times, right? Two times, whoever gave us the grant said where the money went at. The first one was on Marsma, Marsma's bad, because they said that was the, I forget how to describe the label it was.
Low to moderate income.
Low margin.
Low margin, they didn't even check where I did that when we done, or they don't, anyhow, so I'm just saying.
Yeah.
That's, that's where, that's where that work, you know, you can't, you get grant money, they're gonna tell you where, where to use it at, something like that.
So that's what we're using the grant money for, have we considered doing a survey based off of that housing areas that we know would want sewage and can afford it?
That is, you were.
And check to see if we could potentially get it invested in that.
Okay, we need to have a.
I, I just.
Just a first reading.
It doesn't even have to be a first reading, like I said, we can do whatever you want, I mean, I just, I, I needed a number to put in here, that's the only thing. Well, I'd like one tonight if I can get it. Unless you wanna.
We have two choices.
You only have two choices, right?
We can either go with a high and we can, we can come back to it in three years and adjust it down. And we can do that.
I was gonna say, can we look at it in a year?
You can.
Can we, can we look at it in a year?
But you have to pay for the city all the way.
You gotta pay for the city all right, correct, correct, right. He just has it written in that we're definitely gonna do it every three years, but we could do it in a year.
I mean, just to see where, if we did the low number, we look at it in a year.
Experience that much change in a year.
Probably not.
That's why I'm saying, that's for three years, they're gonna do it, they're on schedule to do it anyway, three years. I would say if we're gonna look at it, go then.
It's a lot, a lot of different concepts here. When you can, uh, you've got a, again, you've got a program or a project on the table.
Okay, yeah, give your motion.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I made the motion, we adopt, we put it between the, on the twenty-three oh one. Water suit, kept building, beat twelve thousand, whatever the rest of it was, the highest, the highest.
But possible adjustment after three?
Yeah, possible adjustment after three years.
After three oh one.
After three.
Okay. We need a second.
All right, do I hear a second?
I see.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, good work, it's good. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Boos?
Me.
Two oh one.
Okay, so we're gonna go with person there. Got it.
All right.
Can I ask a question, did you, that just lock us in?
This is the first reading, just first reading.
All right, Curtis, come here and dump this.
The first name, first points for the dump trailer, Widow Cala looked at it.
I'm, I'm gonna interject here just a second. Reason why we're doing this, we all, three of us at the last meeting, where Mr. Warren advised us to do these on the common, these being the capacity of these. First is to do them on an individual basis, but we have votes on each individual. Curtis, I'm gonna put that.
So Curtis, when you talk about these, can you explain what you're gonna be using them for as well?
The dump trailer, though, there's something that we need, um, for, like, if you can make work, who's working today, they're hauling leaves and stuff, instead of having to unload it by hand and stuff. You know, they get a dump trailer to, guys, they, they limbs and everything to dump and it's easy to dump it than it is to, um, that, that's the same thing with, with our guys. You know, for us, we have something, like the dirt pile and old water tower, uh, I mean, the new water tower, if we wanna move that, you know, we would have, have a way of transporting it. We don't have to unload it by hand, load it by hand, or load it by hand.
Do they got one ready or is it four to eight weeks?
They got it, it's, it's like, you know, like thirteen weeks.
Is it really?
Yeah, thirteen weeks out.
I think the most we buy the dump trailer for nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, fifty cent.
Second.
The property dude is second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Boos, same.
The second item is the tractor, uh, then we're gonna trade our old John Deere and own this new tractor with the attachments. That's something that we'll be using as great as free field. Some of the streets over on Cobb, hardy streets that are uneven, that we don't need to roll, load at general, a zero, zero turn, it'll be easier to do with a tractor. And some of the other streets and some of the retention ponds that we can get down in with the tractor, it'll be a lot easier than doing it with zero turns.
This is a first round, just tractor attachment.
Okay. I'm making a motion, purchase, the tractor.
Is this got bridle, four-wheel drive, it's all, it's everything else?
I have, I have a question, man, we need to check on this, where it says all used equipment is sold, that is, or no warranty, I kinda highlight that. I don't know if this would, the paper might be kinda out of order.
I was saying, if it's buying brand new, it's got a.
Yeah, it's brand new.
If it's brand new, it's got a warranty.
A warranty. So it's the tractor, the loader, the lift-type rotary, the Walliser attachments, and the bush hog.
They give eight thousand dollars, I'm cutting them.
Eight thousand fog, come on, tractor, yeah. So is that a good price?
For sixty-five horse, yeah.
What's the price?
Forty-one thousand.
Forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars per cent, we just.
Better than any of us can go back.
Give it a grade.
Have a check.
After.
Huh?
After, three, eight thousand, give me a thousand dollars for that hundred.
All right, I'm gonna take a question.
Aaron, man, you made a motion for the tractor, yeah?
Okay.
I stopped, you stopped.
You, you. All right, uh, you have a motion on the table, do I hear a second?
Second.
Property dude is second, that we buy the John Deere tractor, the forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars, seven, seven cent, all of them in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Boos, same, motion carries.
Third quarter is, it's two, it's three different machines, the fifty G, the thirty-five G, and the sixty G. I was looking at the thirty-five G, um, and it's basically small enough, but it will, I mean, as they say, you can be at least ten feet with it. It's easier to haul, and also, um, have the box blade. And if I could just go down to the next one also, the thirty, the three thirty-one G and the three thirty-three G. I was looking at the three thirty-one, but the blade for the end is not much bigger than the one that will come on the thirty-five G. So maybe if we're gonna, you know, be doing anything with a road, uh, the thirty-three, the three thirty-three G would be a lot bigger, a lot better.
For a skid steer. The, if we do the thirty-five G excavator though, I say we need to add another bucket, like the twenty-four inch, if we have to just dig a hole for something. Cause you're gonna spend forever doing it with a twelve inch and it ain't gonna handle the thirty-four inch that long.
I had.
I think it was on the foot of twenty-four inch.
Thought we had two buckets on.
You got the thirty.
Thirty-six.
You got a twelve inch and a thirty-four inch ditch cleaning bucket. But you need to add twenty, uh, two foot two, cause it ain't gonna handle that thirty-four digging for very long, before you wear out some.
Twenty-four would be.
Twenty-four or eighteen, one of the. It ma, it makes a difference.
What do, what do we want to give it?
Bit thirty-four.
Thirty-five G.
Aren't y'all decided, you want to go with the thirty-five instead of the fifty, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So you're gonna go with the thirty-five, but add this eighteen or twenty-four, whatever you're.
I'd say go, yeah, I'd give it twenty-two or twenty-four, I don't remember what it is, I think it's twenty-four. And this, this got a thumb on it too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this a tractor again?
This is an excavator.
Excavator. So we can kind of put down the manual shelves here.
Okay, we have a motion?
Yep.
I make a motion to purchase the John Deere thirty-five G excavator.
Okay. How much is the price? Uh, sixty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cent.
Plus whatever the other bucket will be. Probably, probably another thousand dollars.
I think that's, we're like eighteen, something.
Yeah. So do I need to say with the additional bucket in the motion? With the additional bucket in the motion?
Now, there is, there was one, I need to bring to the table on this. When I was discussing this with him, I asked him availability on this call for time, time period. The tractor is ready to go at any time, I mean, that's, that's no, no problem. He had a fifty G coming in, in May, did I say? I think I've got it right. He had one, two, one coming in in May and one coming in in June, two coming in in June. I did not discuss the thirty-five, because I was not, that's not where I was looking at. But now, that doesn't mean that they could, could have some, I just don't know.
Even if we've committed the money, it's fine.
So I, I, I just want to bring it to the table, because I had made.
So you said fifty G, then we got, did not, we got them back?
No, the fifty, the fifty G, we had, we had three options that we had on the table. The fifty, the thirty-five, and the. The fifty, the thirty-five, and the thirty-one. What did Curtis?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Oh, the sixty. And sixty, they just told me it was way too heavy. We'd had to get a special trailer and everything, or we just couldn't handle it. Uh, the fifty and the thirty-five are basically, uh, basically the same tractors, just one got more horsepower than the other one. It's a little bit beefier.
Fourteen thousand dollars.
But it's fourteen thousand dollars. I said thirty-fourty.
So Curtis, you think that the thirty-five will do everything you need?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, you committed the money, so I'm not worried about it.
It'll dig water lines and anything, stone, shrub.
Too big, um, because anything that we have to dig, bigger, we have the backhoe.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll just keep that in mind. We can find out, call on that. All right, all right, I have a, I have a motion.
You made it, right?
Yeah.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
To purchase the thirty-five G with the additional bucket.
Twelve, twelve.
Oh, second. Property due to second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, two, motion carried.
Okay, the, um, four things, the John Deere three thirty-one G and the three thirty-three G. Um, the three thirty-one G, it has the box blade, but also the thirty-five G has, has a box blade also.
Yeah.
Um, so it depends on what we're going to be doing. Uh, we're going to be putting in driveways or doing something like at the front of the town hall. I prefer to have something bigger.
Yeah, it's always, thirty-three's got a lot more power compared to the thirty-one. I've drove them both and there's, there's a big difference.
Because it's not, the three thirty-one and the thirty-five G, the, the box blade are pretty much the same, so if we don't do anything bigger, we would need the three thirty-three G.
Three thirty-three.
Yeah, it comes like a trailer.
So we're doing all of these?
It was.
You're doing all of these?
I didn't, I didn't.
No, I didn't.
We're just talking.
Oh. Okay, I was like, wait, what? Like, that's over a hundred grand. Okay. I've just.
No, because it goes on the list, that's what was on the list, because I can take this, um, the gator, HVAC gator, and this de-watering pump.
I'd be saying, I'd be, I'd be worried. I'd say if we get the sump pump first and the stuff like that, and then see what we got after that, or a skid steer, because sump pump would be more handy than a skid steer right now.
Yeah. So, we're not doing anything on that skid steer. Rather than.
So we go, what we go on, on the agenda, that's what we going to buy, right?
Minus.
You've got the trailer, you've got the tractor, and you've got the excavator. Those three so far.
And what about the, uh?
The skid steers, no.
I'd say hold out on that until we get the sump pump.
There's four things that, um, I said three that have, the dump trailer, um.
Tractor.
Tractor, okay, but the, the gator, HVAC gator, and the de-watering pump.
You want that, that gator?
Yeah, I want the gator, yeah, I want the gator.
And we didn't get no quotes for the.
Well, let's vote on the HVAC gator first.
Yeah, yeah, we need to, we need a, a motion for the gator first.
What is that? Somewhere right here.
It's the twenty-five, four forty-six.
Where? I don't know. I've got too many papers going on here. What size bug? Was it? Oh, there it is. Eight thirty-five? That's a nice.
Chris.
The total for that is twenty-five thousand, four, four, six, sixty-three, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, do I hear a motion? What is this for? This is for a utility vehicle feeder, whatever you want to call it.
For these readers.
Reading meters.
Reading meters.
Getting cold in the hot.
Doing whatever.
It's like an ATZ kind of thing?
Yes. You, yeah. It's a John Deere, it's a John Deere gator, but four seats and got a cab.
Right, got cab, yeah. And clothes.
Yeah, you got, too much, I thought, I thought they got admission too, don't they?
Mm-hmm. AC heat, windshield wiper. Radio.
You know, and, and the biggest thing, you know, in the winter time when you have a mew.
It's fifteen degrees outside and foggy, but it's wet. Miserable.
All right, make a motion.
What's it, so even with the new system, they still want to read meters?
Not in the, like, when it's all done? No.
That's not.
But we're.
But that's a long way off.
Or a couple of years from that, yeah.
So I make a motion that we buy the John Deere gator X U B eight three five M. Twenty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-six thousand, six, three cents.
All right, do I hear a second?
That's what we want, man.
Property due to second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
That's all, that's all we need, but the de-watering, uh, uh.
All right, all right, stop, tell him, say, I got a second. I need a motion, and I, I need to make a vote here right quick. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, same, motion carried. Now, Curtis. So all three of the John Deere, are they all from the same company? On the state bid, yes. On state bid, it's.
Yeah, it is.
So it's thirteen percent off?
Yes.
The de-watering pump is, um, something we can use at the lift stations that don't have generators. Um, it's, it's a pump that, it will pump the, whatever wet well we hook it up to, it will send it down the line at that. Uh, we lose power at that wet well, and we have, we only have one, one, um, that has a generator, posed on the outside.
So what's in your packet is the request for quote that we actually sent, um, out in the Levy County Citizen and the Gainesville Sun. We only advertise at those places. I had no idea that this was that difficult of a item to buy. So, the bids were due on March first, last Wednesday, we got zero. So, we do have a quote from Hydro Service. They just updated the quote on Thursday, the day after the bid, for fifty thousand, four hundred, sixty-seven dollars, ninety-four cents. What I'm recommending, because this is such a big ticket item, is that we go back out and we advertise, we can advertise in Jacksonville, Orlando, Tampa, all the places we normally do, and it's.
Big construction.
Right. Rather than take the quote, because again, it's such a high figure that I'd rather try and get that competitively bid. So we'll go back out with this.
Yeah.
That would be probably.
For the next, for another month, it's a bid for another month, or is it till the twenty-second meeting?
Well, what do you think? I mean, I normally do a month. I mean, do you think that's enough time?
How, are you in dire need of it?
No, I'm not. I mean, it's just something that, while we have the money, that, you know, we have nine lift stations that don't have any power.
Yeah, just do it.
Okay, got it.
All right, anything else, Curtis?
I think that's enough.
You spent a lot of money today, Curtis.
No.
Yeah, no.
Good job, Curtis.
You say it.
Does the city have something that can, a bucket truck, or something that can lift people up to put on the Christmas lights, that type of thing? Do they have that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been there.
Okay, did it, did it?
Need a volunteer, we got it on here.
I won't wear the belt, but I'll get in the bucket.
You'll get the bucket? I think safety first.
I think the only thing I have on the agenda is the USDA grant. So what do we got to do with that? I mean, I'm sorry, that's.
I, I mean, we're just announcing that we got it, and that's the good news.
Forty-nine, we got forty-nine thousand. We're, I'm waiting on quotes to come now from the state bids for the trucks. And we're going to also, not only do we look at state bid, we're getting, uh, more dealers to, that have it on their lot, to send us quote. We might even be able to buy it cheaper, so with the way that the state grants are right now. I talked to, uh, Mark today, and he says that we should have the well pump Friday. So he said it's supposed to be done by then, and he'll let me know if there's any, any changes, but, so we're getting closer. We just afford the concrete around the foundation. He's still got more foundation to do, but, um, he'll be working on that since we get the pump in and get everything else finished.
They was, they was working Sunday, I seen.
Yeah.
With Sarah Winston.
Yeah. Curtis, question, or one of y'all can tell me this, uh, what about, has he been working on the other pumps also?
He just finished, um, the check valve in the first one that he rebuilt. The check valve was leaking, and he, he put in a T so that we can, um, drain it, and he put in a attachment. That's done. He's going to start on the new well, probably third, fifth, or fifth. He got, what, the motor and everything is in. I think it's resting at finish line. Uh, but I would explain to him, I didn't want him to start on the, on the other one, until the one that we had was done. He had to change out something, things in the, you know, control panel. That was done. He had to put the T valve, the check valve in, and that was done this weekend. So, right now, that well is, is running okay.
This, this you got, in our conversation, we had the other day, you could tell me, we, we moved the water lines and did, you got it?
Oh, where the hydrant, where the hydrant's going to be, is going to be when you pull in the driveway, we moved it from there to. We were going to put it right there to come in the driveway on the left-hand side, but instead, we have that pipe that's running across, so the hydrant's going out towards the road. So when those trucks pull in there to get water instead of being over here, they'll be out of our way to prevent us from having to get blocked in the driveway trying to get out.
Even so, good deal.
What's the forty-nine thousand buying? Is it, is it a truck or something?
Yes, quick response truck. It's part, part of, part of the hundred and ninety thou, a hundred, was a hundred and, hundreds, forty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, something like that, for, uh, for new quick response truck. It was part of the, um, package that we were doing when we were going for the engine. It's just the second truck. So it's going to be a looking.
All right, thank you all very much. Uh, Mr. Warren?
I got something to add to all of this for each rep party, so I can add.
Well, I put something on your agenda, Attorney Warren. I got to put you on the spot, but, so Attorney Warren has a, um, conversation tomorrow that I'm going to be involved in with the Florida Gaming Control Commission. Just wanted to let everybody know what's going on at a high level. So back in December, um, I actually received multiple complaints about, um, Stony's Jiffy Food, whatever it's called. There's gambling machines in there. They're, it's against our ordinance. Um, we've actually received other complaints since then, but the other two businesses took theirs out. So, um, Stony, gone attorney, Attorney Warren went to the Attorney General to get an opinion, um, based on what Stony's attorney said. So, the Attorney General forwarded it over to the Florida Gaming Control Commission. So we've got a call with them tomorrow to find out where we can go from here. Because basically, they're saying that we're not allowed to pass an ordinance against gambling.
I think that's a violation of state law, and I, I assume that as arbiter of what the state law is, or at least what the state policy considers to be, would be the state. And I was referred to the gaming commission, and they were nice enough to set up a telephone conference for tomorrow. And as you said, I fight it for this state, and I think we probably should. So we're both fully open to the debate on what the stories, if they tell us, they are right, uh, you can divorce that ordinance. And that's the end of that, because we have to consider whether the state.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. And we look, we look forward to finding out what that, the results of that is.
So complaint, is that the machine draining there?
Yeah.
Correct.
Two, two of the places have already taken theirs out. They've volunteered to. Who filed the complaint? Pardon? Who filed the complaint? Can you go? Pardon? Can you tell me? I don't know what it was. That's why I can tell you now.
Let's just put it this way, businesses in town are stitching on other businesses in town. That's all I can say.
Did I dodge that bullet or not?
You did. I'm happy to say it. That's what it is.
So, thank you, Mr. Warren. All right, uh, infrastructure, do I need, do we have anything I need to write in here or nothing? Thanks, sir. I think I'm good. Jason, he's good, he's here.
Uh, if you have anything on the roof, I'm good.
You good? Mr. Todd?
I'm good.
You good? Is she here?
Fine.
Is he? Is he going to help?
I think, uh, Dr. Rover got wood on, on, uh, on the center there, uh, the, uh, map that's remained, where he left it, right?
Yeah, it's, it's fine. Yeah. I went and looked at it and.
It was like a good.
It was a good job.
Awesome. It did. I apologize for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other things? All right, you'll have a chance to look over the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
My second.
Property due to second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, you can adjourn.
Forgot to put my hair down.
That's why.